I'd like to offer the invocation and then we'll be followed by the pledge of allegiance. Most gracious heavenly father, we thank you again for another day. We thank you for the blessings that you have provided each and every day for us. We also thank you dear God for the times when we seem to be in more difficulty than we can deal with on our own. So for that, we thank you for your support, your grace, your peace and your comfort. I'd like to ask a special prayer from our community tonight for the Dean family. David Dean passed away today. Been battling cancer for several months. The Dean family has been a big part of our community for many, many years. Had a business and very involved in the school system and also in the churches. So we just ask that your peace, your comfort would abide amongst them in the days ahead. Father, we ask these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is to adopt the business agenda. Somebody's ready to make a motion if there's no conflicts?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the business agenda as stated.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bill. It's a second to his motion. Second by Mr. Jackson. Any more discussion on the matter? If there is none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If those know, the agenda will be approved as is presented. Item four is special recognition we have from police and fire department tonight. I'll call on Chief Patrick with the fire department. Good afternoon, chief.
Good afternoon, mayor and council, guests. We're tonight to do a couple of different recognitions. First of all, we want to recognize a couple of our newest employees. They have been with us actually for about eight months, but they spent about five months in school at Nash Community College, at Nash Fire Academy. So we'll start with them. I'll call them up. Guys, if you're just staying right here beside me. Mr. Wade, hold one second. Mr. Holden Wade Jenkins, Mr. Alex Clark, and Mr. Nicholas Johnson. So these guys' journey began back in August, like the first week or so of August, they came on board. Actually, back in July, they came on board and they worked two weeks with us on daytime. And our guys took them out and done a little bit of training with them, just to kind of prepare them for what they were going up against when they got into the fire academy. Once they got into the academy itself, they were some long nights or long days, and I'm pretty sure it was long nights too from studying. These guys would have to be on the road at 4:30 in the morning headed to Nash. And once getting there at 6 o'clock, they would be in PT for about an hour, I believe. Is that correct, guys? And then they would be in classroom all day, whether it was doing academics or actually doing some hands-on firefighting skills. So that meant for some long days for them, five days a week. So first of all, we would like to introduce you all to Holden Wade Jenkins. He's the son of Ms. Mary Durham, who some of you may know as a teacher here, I think, at Belmont. And also, Mr. Son of his father is Jonathan Jenkins of Conway. He's a 2022 graduate of Halifax Academy, and there he was an athlete who participated in baseball and football. Wade began his fire service career about two years ago with Conway and also serves, currently serves with Emporium Volunteer Fire Department. Tonight, Wade's girlfriend, Ms. Reagan Saunders, will be placing his badge on. Next, we have Mr. Alex Clark. He's the son of Mr. and Ms. Josh Clark of Roanoke Rapids. He's a 2022 graduate of Roanoke Rapids High School. There he participated in sports as well, basketball, football, swimming, and currently he serves as a local swim coach here for the Roanoke Valley Swim Team. Alex joined Gaston Fire Department roughly about a year ago, where he began to run calls and get experience, a little bit of experience with the fire and EMS service and decided that he wanted to make a career of this. So tonight, placing his badge is his father, which most of you may know him, Josh Clark. I believe he's the assistant principal at Belmont, intern. So his mother was trying to make it, but I don't believe she was able to make it. How real. And his mother's Mandy Clark, by the way. Okay, last but not least, we have Mr. Nicholas Johnson. Nick is the son of Mr. and Mrs. Chris Johnson of Roanoke Rapids. He's a 2023 graduate of Roanoke Rapids High School. He, like most of the others, started in Gaston. He's been there since he was a junior member. I believe he told me he was 14 when he joined the fire department there, where he served roughly five years up to this point now. Now, Nick didn't start with us actually in July. Nick started on his own by going on his own. We had hired three people, these first two gentlemen, and then there was another gentleman that had been hired with us as well. He had got injured during the academy and was not able to complete it. So Nick was in the academy and the instructors talked highly of him and recommended him, and so we were able to, we were blessed to be able to get a hold to him and get him hired so we could get him graduated with these other two gentlemen. So Nick is tonight pending his badge on will be his girlfriend, Ms. Holly Strickland. You guys will give them a round of applause. So the next recognitions we have are some life saves. So what designates a lifesaver for us? So we go by the mandate that's put out by the state, North Carolina State Fire Association, and this is any member of the company who is actually involved with the successful resuscitation of a patient who is without a pulse and without respirations. The patient must be resuscitated in the field and either admitted or released from a medical facility within that area. The term resuscitation refers to reestablish the patient's pulse. So we have two different sets of lifesaves tonight. The first one, I'm gonna call Mr. Do not see, is Lieutenant Hollowell here? No. Okay, we have Lieutenant Hollowell and firefighter Kobe Edwards. Kobe Edwards, will you step forward, please? So I'm gonna read this commendation for him. For an act of heroism and lifesaving on the 11th of November 2024 while serving as a firefighter for the city of Roanoke Rapids. On this day, you responded to a call of a citizen that was having difficulty breathing and history of COPD. Upon arrival of you and Lieutenant Hollowell along with the Halifax County EMS, the patient was found to be, found laying on the floor with no pulse and no breathing. You all immediately began lifesaving measures such as CPR and administering oxygen. The patient was then transported to a local medical facility by EMS personnel for further care. This recommendation or this commendation is bestowed upon you for an act performed in the line of duty, which your knowledge of lifesaving skills and prompt alert action resulted in saving a life. So now I present it to Kobe Edwards. The next commendation is if I could call Lieutenant Brandon Sharon forward and firefighter Nicholas Johnson. So to read their commendation, theirs is much like the last one. For an act of heroism and lifesaving on the 30th of December 2024 while serving as a firefighter for the city of Roanoke Rapids. On this day, you responded to a call of a citizen that was unresponsive. Upon arrival of you and firefighter Johnson, which I'm reading Lieutenant Sharon's, along with Halifax County EMS, the patient was found lying on the floor with no pulse and no breath. You all immediately began lifesaving measures such as CPR and administering oxygen. After providing these lifesaving measures for a few minutes, the patient regained a steady pulse. The patient was then transported to a local medical facility by EMS personnel for further care. This commendation is bestowed upon you for an act performed in the line of duty, which through your knowledge and lifesaving skills and prompt alert action resulted in a life being saved. Presented this day, 18th day of February 2025. Mr. Sharon?
You wanna do both of them?
So that concludes my recommendations and recognitions and commendations for tonight. I do have a couple of quick things, you know. All the hype this week is snowstorm, right? I know early on last week, or late last week, it was, I think, more of a threat of an ice storm, which I don't think, that would have been very bad, and hopefully we won't get that, or mostly it'll be snow. But just as a reminder to everyone, just be safe while heating. Make sure that you keep, if you're using any kind of space heaters or anything, you know, we like to say they need space, three-foot area, you know, so keep it, you know, they call space heaters for a reason, they need space. So let's keep the three-foot area clear around them. Make sure you don't have any kind of flammable combustible materials around any open flames, such as if you've got wooden fireplaces, gas logs, or anything like that. And if something happens and you do lose power, excuse me, make sure your generators are put outside in a well-ventilated area and not up close to the house where those fumes could come inside. So thank you all again for this time.
Thank you, Chief Patrick. And for the police department, I call on interim chief Phillips.
Good evening, mayor, council, those in attendance. I am, just, there you go. We recognize a new hire that we had, that we got Officer Todd Stevenson. Officer Stevenson comes to us from Northampton County. He's got four years of active service in law enforcement in Northampton County. He is a Northampton County resident and graduated from Northampton County High School. He's been with us for a couple of months now, all right, and is almost finished with his field training stuff. He doesn't got too much more to go. He's very good already at what he does. He's a people person, and he works extremely hard. So he's a really good asset to us here at the police department, and just wanted to introduce him to council and those in attendance that came tonight. So see this face, he's a good guy, and I'm looking forward to great things from him. And before I sit down, I just kinda want to reiterate what Chief Patrick was saying about the weather. You know, here in North Carolina, especially here, close to, as close to the coast as we are, our weather changes from day to day, minute to minute, hour to hour. And we honestly don't know what's coming. We do know we're getting something, we just don't know exactly how much. And it could be three to four inches, it could be eight to 13 inches. Who really knows until it happens. But with that being said, if you do not have to be out on the road traveling, please stay at home. You're putting yourself at danger, in danger, you're putting others in danger, and you're putting our first responders at danger just for having to respond to calls that include wrecks, house fires, and other sort of things. However, if you have to get out, please use extreme caution, and if you need anything, it's an emergency, always dial 911. I've had contact throughout the day with our 911 director, and they are setting up bedding for all of our telecommunications, at Central. So they'll have round-the-clock help there, till we're expecting to get a lot of phone calls. We get a lot of down-tree calls and stuff like that. So, but please be careful. If you need anything, always call us, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Phillips. And I'd just like to say on behalf of the city council to those that are new hires, we appreciate you when they're leaving. I speak to the families there. We appreciate them, you know, deciding to come to Roanoke Rapids to begin their careers in some aspects. Some of them are new, and I wanted to say after I recognized them, that they need your support, because, you know, being a firefighter or being a police officer, both of them are strenuous jobs, and there's a lot of times I think that they probably just need somebody to talk to and encourage them. And so we hope you will do that, because when we invest our time and money and energy in training these young people, we hope they'll stay here and make Roanoke Rapids their home and work a long time, you know, of their career here with us. With that being said, we appreciate everything you do. We don't have anybody on schedule, do we? Okay. Next is item six, the approval of the city council meeting minutes of February the 4th. Someone like to make a motion to approve as they presented, or if any changes need to be made?
May I make a motion to approve the February 4th, 2025 Reagan City Council meeting as drafted?
Hold on just a second. Got a motion by Mr. Stainback. Is there any more discussion on the matter? It's a second to the motion.
Second.
Second. Any more discussion? Be none, all in favor of approving the minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, the motion will be approved. Item seven is new business. Call on the finance director for budget amendment. Good evening.
So the first budget amendment is for the senior senator. They received 14,800 for the general purpose grant. Normally, we'll have this earlier, but it was late this year. So we had originally set the budget at 8,000, but they're telling us we will get 14,800. So I would like for you to consider a motion to adopt ordinance number 2025-04 in the amount of $6,800 to increase the 24-25 budget.
Okay, we've heard from the finance director. We need a motion?
I'd make a motion to consider a motion to adopt ordinance number 2025-04 in the amount of $6,800 to increase the fiscal year 2024 through 2025 budget for the general purpose grant for the, oh, went down a little bit too far. I'd like to make a motion to, as far as to accept or consider the adopter ordinance number 2025-4.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Bill. It's a second to his motion. Second by Mr. Jackson. Is there any more discussion on the matter? If there is none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those know, the motion will be approved. I believe you have the next item.
The police department received DOJ drug forfeiture funds from a case 21-D-A-671384 in the amount of $13,985.72. I would like for you to consider a motion to adopt budget ordinance 2025-05.
Okay, do we hear such a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to consider a motion to adopt ordinance number 2025-05 in the amount of $13,985.72 for drug enforcement, excuse me, for drug forfeiture funds for the police department.
Okay, motion by Councilman Strickland. Do we hear a second to his motion?
Second.
I believe it was by Mr. Stainback. Any more discussion on the matter? All in favor, signify by saying aye. If those know, the motion will be approved. Item C.
Joe Story Senior Center, they were awarded the ship grant program from the county, and we had budgeted some funds, but they had additional funds that we received in the amount of $5,600. So I would like you to consider a motion to adopt ordinance number 2025-06.
Again, we need a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2025-06 in the amount of $5,600 for the ship grant for the Joe Story Center, Senior Center.
Okay, the motion is by Councilwoman Bryant, and the second is by Councilman Bill. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. If those know, item for ship grant will be approved. Item D, that's on the city manager.
Good evening, mayor and council. Before you tonight is consideration of the budget calendar for fiscal year 2025-2026. We are currently taking, starting those activities for the month of February, where departments are preparing their budget requests and worksheets and gathering data and list of wants and needs and must-haves for consideration. After the department had submit those to myself and to the finance director in early March, we will have one-on-one meetings with each of the departments. And then as we develop the budget- the budget, make some recommendations and submit a proposed budget to the City Council. During the month of April, we will schedule meetings with the City Council and the departments for you to review their proposed budgets, and those dates and times and locations will be determined here shortly. Our intent is to present a copy of the recommended budget and budget message to the City Council during its May the 6th meeting, and make that publicly available for viewing, and then proposing to have the public hearing on the budget during the council meeting on May the 20th. June the 3rd is the tentative date for the presentation of the budget ordinance for adoption, and should any additional time be needed, we have the June 17th as an alternate approval date if more time or modifications are needed for final review and adoption of the budget. In accordance with the state law, we have to have a draft budget and budget message presented to the City Council before June the 1st, and adoption of a new budget in place for the upcoming fiscal year prior to July 1st. And so this calendar sets forth that course to ensure that we will comply with the general statutes and have an organized development of our fiscal year 2026 budget. Subject to any questions, just ask for your approval of the budget calendar that's been prepared before you.
Does anybody have any question, the City Manager? If not, we need a motion to accept the calendar.
I'd like to make a motion to consider a motion for the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget calendar.
Okay, the motion is by Councilman Jackson, hear second to the motion. Second by Councilman Strickland. Any more discussion on the matter? If there be none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion will be approved. Thank you, Mayor. And your report is next, Ms. Trainor.
Okay. I'll go on here. A copy of the reported items from the departments, my bullet is in your packet, I'll go over a few of these things. The Strategic Planning and Economic Development Workshop that we had scheduled for tomorrow, unfortunately, will be rescheduled, so I'll be reaching out to you all with some dates. More than likely, we'll try to have it correspond either around a City Council date for optimal attendance. But we can still move on, we can still start the project. I spoke with the consultant, there's some work that they can still be doing in the background, and so there will be a public engagement portion of it, and it's about a five-month-long project, but we anticipate completion of it by July. But really, it'll be a good opportunity for us to set forth a work plan of working towards a vision, a shared vision, and accomplishing tasks and duties that be transparent and a tool that can be used as a communication tool with the public and amongst ourselves and each other as well. So we'll look out for those dates, and just as a reminder that this planning project is funded through the RC2 Grant Award, and no city funds are budgeted for it. The Fire Department started on Monday, they conducted one live burn training out at the Training Center on Henson Street, and on Monday, they will have their next one, and then in early March, they'll have another one during business hours. Starting this week, the EMT certification course will begin in 14, registered, and that course will be completed by June, or in June. The occupancy tax funds have been used to purchase scoreboards at Ledgerwood, and those are in production. We anticipate those being up within the next month or two, prior to the spring sports season, starting. This week, with carving classes, we're supposed to start, but due to inclement weather, they'll be postponed, and also bingo, that usually takes place in this building on Wednesdays, has been canceled this week due to the inclement weather. The Industrial Basketball League, there's six teams that will be playing, and those games start this evening. And also in the library, there's a display set up in honor of Black History Month for month of February, and we'll continue on with storytime on Wednesdays, Legos on Tuesdays, and then other activities, including Aqua Zumba at the pool, and Aqua Toddler Time, so other programming taking place. And then coming up soon, April 12th will be the annual Easter egg hunt. The City Administration received notice from the Office of U.S. Congressman Don Davis's office, of his intent to hold a brief speaking engagement this Friday at 10 o'clock. The original intent was to hold it at the Syracuse Ovens Plaza at Martin Luther King Park, but due to the likelihood of snow being on the ground, this speaking engagement will be moved to City Hall. According to his assistant, that they're pretty firm in these plans to do this, but the purpose of this speaking engagement on Friday morning will be for Congressman Davis to discuss this proposed legislation honoring Syracuse Ovens into the United States Congress. And so we encourage attendees who plan to come to exercise extreme caution when making plans to come, due to the inclement conditions that will be present Friday morning. As we are currently preparing for a storm for tomorrow, it's supposed to start sometime tomorrow afternoon, or as early as late morning, but City Hall or City Offices and nonessential facilities will be closed tomorrow, starting at noon, and we encourage anyone that has any business to conduct at City Hall to go ahead and get that done earlier in the morning. Our plan right now, based on the forecast, is to be closed, for nonessential services to be closed on Thursday, and then we'll reassess and see where we are Thursday afternoon and make a decision. But our Public Works Department is committed to continuing to grind, and they're preparing to plow streets. We have about 100 miles of local streets that are just city streets, not including state ones, and so it's a lot of area to cover, and keeping safety as our top priority. As has been mentioned by interim chief Phillips, we know we try and encourage people to stay off the roads if they, unless, but if they really have to go somewhere to allow additional time, and to be mindful of the conditions, and pay attention and stay informed of the latest reports and travel conditions. Our police and fire departments are trained and ready to assist as well. We will have, there are plans in place to handle emergencies around the clock, and our Public Works crews, again, they are prepared and will work diligently throughout the storm to restore conditions as normal and swiftly as possible. The City asks for your cooperation and patience as we work together to ensure community safety during these winter storms, and we just hope that everyone stays safe and gets prepared and, as the best outcome possible. So we know that the school system is likely going to go online, and we do have opportunities. Government business will continue to go on, but we do have some things, staff will have some remote capabilities, and, for example, our permit system remains online, and so citizens can apply for permits 24/7. Subject to any questions you have, that concludes my report.
All right. Does anybody have any questions at the manager? If not, we will move on to Finance Director.
Okay, for the month of January, we had total gross receipts year-to-date of $13,400,000, total expenditures of $11,600,000. So year-to-date, our revenues have exceeded our expenditures by $1.8 million. As of January, we were at 56.3% of our budget. The month of January is, you know, we got a lot of our Avalum, that's like one of our last big checks that we would get, so it's critical to hold as much year-to-date earnings as possible to continue operations until the end of the year.
Do I have any questions? Do we have to have a motion for that? I'm looking at something else right now. We need a motion for that to approve?
I don't think so.
Okay, all right. Are you, I couldn't hardly hear you. Are you finished?
I was speaking.
Yeah, I couldn't quite hear you. Are you completing your report?
I'm finished, yes, sir.
That's what kinda threw me off.
Okay, thank you.
Right, thank you. Anything else that needs to come before the council tonight? If there is not anything, call for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Steinbach, second. Second by Mr. Strickland, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion approved, we adjourn.